We do have a quorum, please ride spur of the bludge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the symbol of perfect friendships among the united cultures.
Hey, welcome everyone. A lot of faces, so good to see you all. Um, we are gonna go ahead and move on to item two consent agenda, consideration to adopt meeting agenda. Do we have a motion on the floor?
I make a motion to adopt meeting agenda.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
All second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, meeting agenda has been adopted. Item two B, consideration to approve minutes of previous meetings from January thirteenth, which was the regular meeting, and then the board workshop on January twenty second. You have any discussion additions or a motion?
I move we approve the minutes from the two meetings that are listed.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
All second.
Okay, Ms. Miles made a motion, Ms. Segovia second, all in favor?
Aye.
Right. January thirteenth and January twenty second meeting minutes approved. Um, item three, we have reorganization of the board, item A. The floor is open for any nominations for discussion or if anything.
Um, I move that the board organization remains as we currently have it. Uh, with Kelly Cobos president, Juanita Segovia vice president, and Nancy Miles.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion for a second?
All second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Notice the reluctance here a little bit. Item three B, appointment of two board members to the finance subcommittee. Who is currently serving on that, is it Linda and Juanita?
On the budget.
Uh, finance, uh huh, okay.
I honestly, um, I've been on the finance committee, but I am finding it hard to come on Thursday mornings like we initially planned, um, just having to take additional time off of work is not, it's just not feasible for me, it's not working.
And I think we still have to name someone, so, um, if I'm correct, I think we still have to name someone, but that doesn't mean that the Thursday meetings have to occur, which is, I mean, that has been voiced to me, and so that's kind of why we moved the finance to the bottom is business. It's a give and take, it's hard whenever, I mean, I get it, it's hard whenever they, there's obligate, you know, daily obligations, day-to-day obligations. I don't know.
What can we do? Or what we're having to do?
I really do not know. Do we, do we know?
Like, we can do it at a different time, she can do it myself, oh, you know, from her office, I mean, we got all kinds of options.
I think y'all set that Thursday date, it could be anytime, it doesn't have to be during business year. Business needs to know some.
What other options have there been previous years, like, I know there was one time where we would just come earlier to the board meeting and then do it there with all of us?
It's part of the only deal.
Be there as well.
Is that okay with all of you guys?
That's fine.
That'd be good with you.
I mean, with me personally, I mean, which I'm fine with you guys doing it without me, but I work in Rawlsville, I don't get off till five, so board meetings start at six, so I couldn't get here probably any sooner than five thirty. I mean, just say, I mean, I could come and just chime in wherever you guys, if that's okay, but as far as, I mean, there may be times when I can leave a little bit early to make it, but I cannot commit to say I can be here every single time because I just.
So, okay, so can we leave the subcommittee with, with you two on there just so that you, you're named on there? And then whenever we get to the bottom on the monthly finance meeting, we can discuss the, um, like, the actual, yeah, how we wanna proceed.
That's fine.
Is that fine?
How long does it usually take on those meetings?
I don't know how long they've been coming, so, I mean, before when we were doing the separate ones, it was like hour maybe, I don't know.
Remember, all depends on the questions that we have for them and if they have something to present for us. So, I mean, I don't think the, I think the longest it's taken is what, maybe an hour and a half? Maybe? Would like to be on the subcommittee?
Well, yeah, I'd like to, I'd like the opportunity to, uh, learn about it, and if we move it to later, you know,
time like.
All together.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we have, yeah. If, I mean, you guys make a motion, if that's what you guys are comfortable with.
You want to try?
No.
Being on the subcommittee, I mean, we're probably gonna just to be named on it for now and then.
Okay, so you guys make a motion.
Okay.
For.
I move that, um, our finance subcommittee would be, uh, Mr. Davalos and Ms. Segovia.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
All second.
Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so our finance subcommittee will be Mr. Davalos and Ms. Segovia. And then we also need an audit committee, which, um, again, that's kind of, I think more for title purposes than anything, um. Obviously, we're all responsible, so.
I've served on the audit committee and I'm willing to continue.
Ms. Miles is willing to. I, I can serve as well, unless, unless Ms. will listen. And, and, I just, yeah, I'm good. So I move that Ms. Miles and Ms. Cobos remain on the audit committee.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
All second.
Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so audit committee will be Ms. Miles and myself. Okay, item four A, construction reports.
Let me tell about the field house real quick.
No, I'll do that very my report.
Oh.
Oh, you're talking about construction.
For the new. Well, I mean, this, the.
Basically, everything's still in limbo with the committees at the state level, so as soon as we get something, I'll inform the board of their speed. Basically, nothing's been done, so we don't have any movement at all until they complete the finance and tell us how much money we have. Do you hear that correct, Ms. Jean? Did I say that right?
Yeah, they have to wait to hear from PSFA. PSFA is working with their funding to see if they have enough money to offer the extra square footage, the new calculator generates, not, because they can't just give it to Dexter, they have to give it to every other project.
Do we have access to that new calculator yet or no?
No, because it's not, it's not in play yet. You know, it's kind of legislation, they pass it, then they gotta make people know how it works, so no.
So are they taking, um, into account that we're wanting the two separate buildings versus the combo, or what is the?
It will be a combo award period, that's what it is, and when the decision to be one or two comes, um, from what I understand, you know, waiting on square footage, whether you know whether we're gonna have the extra or not.
Right. Because you had mentioned us getting the option C, which was the bigger one, is that just, was that just kind of a maybe? Or, I mean, from the last we heard was that was.
They felt pretty confident that we get the extra square footage, however, what Ms. Jeanie was saying, that what I learned today is that if they give it to Dexter, they have to give it to everyone who's in the planning stages, so I guess what they try to do is, will do that? Can they afford that? And if they can, I feel real confident we'll get it, they can't, that's another issue, but.
Okay, so when will the next, when will the next meeting be, do we have a date for that now?
Not until Dexter feels like, you know, we're just kind of spinning wheels and still, until they know what they have to do.
Okay.
Is there a timeline on that, like, is that supposed to happen in the next month or so, or we're just waiting?
I don't think so, um, I spoke to Sarah from PSFA today, that's where I got this information from, but it's, you know, of course, it's not a Sarah, and I don't know how many projects this, going to, across the state is right now, and we buy things, so they'll have to calculate all that, I don't know.
The only thing we got going in our favor is the state's in a very good place financially overall right now.
Well, plus you would think, if they didn't have the money to offer the extra square footage, then why'd they even bring it up, right?
Right, I mean.
Good point.
Is that all we have for construction report?
Yeah.
Okay, item, uh, four B, presentation of the fiscal year twenty four audits. And that's Carmen. We're ready for you, Ms. Carmen.
Wonderful, can you just please come through, may you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Perfect, I just wanna make sure, you know, with the technical issues, but thank you so much for having me, my name is Carmen Spiley, and, um, I'm representing D.C. Metron Company, here to present the audit results for fiscal year twenty twenty four for Dexter's tolerated schools. So I'm gonna go over the financial statements, if you have it in front of you, you can go ahead and follow me, um, and then I'll go over the major points, and we can answer any questions towards the end. So if you open your financial statements.
We're not turning back in.
Yeah, we did. And I should have, I didn't, should have brought it, I didn't bring it, I didn't know any or two, I don't. Okay.
No, let me know when you're.
We're good.
That's perfect. Okay, so let me, if you open your, uh, financial statements, page two or page six, it's in the chapter PDF. This is the first report that we provide you, this is the independent auditor's report. In this report, we have the opinion, uh, Dexter has received as a unmodified opinion, meaning that it's the best opinion we can give you, and we do believe that your financial statements are presented fairly and free on the real case. This report also outlines the responsibilities of management, which was, were provided with all the information that we requested and required in order to give you this opinion, and the responsibilities of the auditor, which was to review all this information in order for us to provide you with this opinion. As I mentioned, it has been an unmodified opinion. This report also outlines some of the required information that we are required to present, uh, as well as some other supplementary information that we're not necessarily required to present, but we still choose to, or Dexter chooses to, to present for its financial statement. If you scroll or change to page six or page seven in the PDF, we have the start of the government-wide financial statements. First, the statement of net decision, which includes assets and liabilities, and then the statement of activity, which includes your revenues and any expenditures. This is government-wide because it includes long-term items, such as capital assets, non-debt situations, um, as well as any deferred outholds and deferred inputs, a long-term liability related to your open and ERV, which are your retirement payments, as well as your note sale. So this allows you to see how Dexter is performing in the government-wide way, right, including all the funds. And then if you go to page ten, that is the balance sheet and income statement for every fund. So now it is a little bit more, um, easier to understand, and it's for every single fund. We present only major funds at the beginning, and all non-major funds are also presented towards the end. This is just for presentation purposes, if we included all of them at first, it could be a little overwhelming, so we just include a total column for all those non-majors. And this allows you to see how each fund is performing individually, without those long-term items that were capital assets and long-term debt. Afterwards, starting on page twenty-two, we have the budget for all major funds. As I mentioned before, we are required to present only the major fund budget. There are some structures that are actual, but we are required to test all of those funds, so although they're not presented, they're so tested, and just for presentation purposes, we go to major funds. And then starting on page thirty-one, we have the fiduciary fund, formerly known as the serial fund. These funds are funds that, although not owned by Dexter's tolerated schools, they are held by Dexter's tolerated schools. And these are funds, for example, for the Bucky's Art Fund, National Art Society, and all those clubs that Dexter holds their money for. Starting on page thirty-four, we have the notes to the financial statements. These notes go a little bit more into detail on what Dexter is as an entity, or is my reported entity, as well as the explanation on what a government-wide financial statements are, again, finance, fund financial statements. And then also covers more detail on those balances that are presented towards the beginning or in that government-wide financial statement. For example, if you go to page fifty-five, we have the disclosure for capital assets. Uh, you can observe that Dexter spent about one point four million dollars, a little over one point four million dollars on equipment, as well as other building improvements throughout the year, so this for casino that's worth growing, and that is across all the middle school and elementary. Uh, and then starting on page fifty-six, you can also see the disclosures for those long-term items. Um, Dexter has multiple loans, and this year they were able to pay off one of them, and then you obtain a new loan for seven hundred thousand, seven hundred thousand dollars. All these loans are expected to be paid off within the next fifteen years, given that there is no more added. But all the ones you have would be paid off within the next fifteen years. In the notes, we also include notes related to ERV and open, which are your retirement support, as well as your NMRHVA. These notes are, although not prepared by D.C. initial or by Dexter, they are prepared by the state, they are made public, and then we go ahead and extract that information to be able to present it into your financial statement. That is a requirement, um, for us to do, and for you to present. That includes the tables that are, starting on page seventy-eight, and you see there's gonna be multiple tables there related to your proportion of share, as well as your schedule contributions. So all that information is not prepared by us, but is presented. And then if you go all the way to page eighty-one, as I mentioned before, all the non-major, uh, funds, although presented as a total at the beginning of the financial statement, they are presented individually at the end, for you to see the performance for each individual fund. And we also present for special revenue funds, capital project funds, as well as debt service funds. If you can see, if you wanna see, um, how they perform within those three categories. And almost towards the end of the financial statement, and we go to page one oh seven, that is gonna be the second report that as auditors we provide you. This report is on the internal controls over financial reporting. With this report, outlines is that based on the internal controls that Dexter already has in place, we determine the areas that are more risky than others, as well as the areas that we are gonna be testing for than others, you know? They might be testing more in accounts receivable than, uh, capital assets, it's, it all depends we are testing. It also outlines that we do not give you an opinion on whether your internal controls are efficient, but we use them to determine our funds. In this report, we also provide you with any, uh, material weaknesses, um, significant deficiencies, or other non-compliance that have been identified during the audit, which I will go into a little bit more detail in the next few pages. And then starting on page one oh nine, this is the third report that we provide you. This report is for compliance on each major federal program, or as we also call it, a bingo audit. What this report says is that we go ahead and review all your federal programs, and we give you an opinion on whether your financial statements related to the audit of federal programs are presented fairly and free on the real statement. Dexter has also received an unmodified opinion. It's the best opinion we can give you, and this is on the ma- major federal program. For this year, we have the California Cluster Program. And then if you go all the way to page one fourteen, page one fourteen includes a summary of the results, because without reading those results, you can come to this page and you can see that, as I mentioned, you have received an unmodified opinion, believing that we believe your financial statements are presented fairly and free of material statements. There was no material weaknesses identified, however, there were some significant deficiencies identified, as well as others non-compliant. For your federal awards, you also received an unmodified opinion, and there was no material weaknesses identified, no significant deficiencies, and no others non-compliant. So what does this mean? Page one fifteen has the summary or schedule of findings. Last year, you had two findings, one related to untimely time change, which was resolved for this year, and one related to expenditures and excess of budget, which was modified and repeated for the current year. In this current year, other than that, of budget findings, which has modified and repeated, you also have two new findings for a, for a total of three findings. Now I'll go into detail on each one. The first new finding for current year was related to the PED cash report. This finding was because the cash balance for the financial statement was sixty-nine thousand eight hundred and ten dollars less than the cash that was reported to that PED report. This is related to some reconciliation issues, and they have been informed to the business manager. We recommend that the team that submitted to PED, uh, ensure that they are reconciling with the balance that you have in your account or standardized address. And management will be making any year-end adjust, adjusting journal entries, so that way your cash report for twenty twenty-five agrees and reconciles with that PED report. So it's something that has been communicated, and we will be working with Jeanie to ensure that that gets solved for the next, next fiscal year twenty twenty-five. The second finding, as I mentioned, was the modified and repeated related to expenditures next to the budget. And as the name says, your actual expenses exceeded your budgeted expenses by a total of six hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. Uh, we recommend that the board, the superintendent and the business manager, devote sufficient time to review the final budget, and are submitting any FARS or fiduciary adjustments requests on a timely manner. This is to ensure that at the end of the year, you are not exceeding any of that budget in, in your expenditures. As a response, Dexter has already, the board of education has already provided a lengthy approval for all FARS for twenty twenty-five, allowing the business managers to go ahead and submit those FARS and present them for approval at the subsequent ED. This will allow for those FARS to be submitted timely, and for any excess in budgetary expenses to be, um, out of time, and everything to be adjusted timely. So it's something that we expect for next year to be, um, resolved. And then the third finding is related to per diem, or other non-compliance. During our testing, we, uh, find some, two exceptions where the lodging rate of two hundred and fifteen dollars per night exceeds the limit of two fifteen. So what we recommend is that lodging rates that are gonna be over two fifteen dollars a night are approved by the superintendent or the board of directors. In response, the district will establish a clear process to go ahead and request that approval from the superintendent and board of, or board directors, and will be able to communicate that with the team, ensuring that all of this, this is, don't happen again. Sometimes this is just like an issue with communication, you know, if there's something that is overt, it can be approved, but if nobody approves it on a timely manner, then it becomes a finding of non-compliance. That's something that with this new process that is gonna be in place, we expect for it to be resolved for the next year. And those are the, the three findings that we had for twenty twenty-four. Other than that, I wanna mention, um, you know, thank you so much to Jeanie and her team for providing us all the information, all the samples, everything that we request to have got it. It's not an easy job, and on top of all the work that you do for the tools, we come in and also are reviewing lots and lots of paperwork, so it's, it's incredible, like, the job that you guys do, and being able to provide us all that information. So we look forward to working with you in the future. I do wanna note that this year was our seventh year, um, in a row, providing you with the audit services. The audit room does say that we can only be your auditor for a consecutive year, and then after that, we are required to do a two-year rotation. So if you decide to stay with us for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, that would be our last year that we're able to provide you, uh, and then we would have to wait at least a minimum of two years before we can become your auditors again. So it has been a wonderful time, I've been, I think this is my fourth year doing the audit with, working with Jeanie. So it'll probably be the next year, and then afterwards, if you just had to come back to us in the future, we'll be so happy to work with you, um, again. But that is all for us, again, I wanna mention Dexter has received an unmodified opinion. So now I'm open to any questions you have.
So this one on the, the six eighty-three, where's that, were we short on that, overspent on?
I, I can see.
Yes.
Yeah, um, on, on the, the, um, over, over budgeted excess. So the big one is our activities, which is cash, not budget at all. And, um, honestly, that's something we've never even had to worry about before, because we do so much fundraising, and that's, we've never, I've never had to increase the activity budget to match that cash that should have last year.
Ah.
Yeah. Um, one was twenty-one thousand cafeteria, and, and then the ed tech, um, I think that's the song, that's our accounting fees. When we pay, no, when we receive our tax revenue from the company, they take their one percent cut. Um, at the beginning of the year in our budget, those, the amount of revenue we're gonna get is pre-filled, but if we get more, um, we need to adjust that accounting fee because it's in a separate function. So we need to do a budget increase based on revenue coming in.
Thank you, Jean, for clarifying, and I did wanna clarify that, uh, as Jean moving the budget, we're school our first function, so even though you didn't exceed expenditures, um, for the whole fund, if you exceed expenditures for that function, whether it's all kind of services, who is there, this transportation, that is still a finding, just because you, you are required to submit some adjustments to be able to change that, um, that budget for each function. It just makes it a little bit harder looking down.
Yeah, I'm. We'll discuss it more later too, so.
Any additional questions?
Anybody?
No, I don't.
No, thank you, Ms. Carmen. Thank you.
Thank you. Awesome, well, thank you so much, uh, thank you for having me again, and as I said, uh, I'm a little busy here, but I'm available throughout the year, the rest of our team is available throughout the year, for, for us to be able to help you solve these findings that you have. As I said, none of them are too terrible, and they, you can expect to tell them for the following year. So Jean, please ensure you're on in, in staying contact with me when you have the chance, and with, uh, open us, have a good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, bye now.
Okay. Um, item four C, students and teacher reports, do we have any students and teacher reports?
Oh, well.
Item four D, board reports, you have any board reports?
So on, on board reports, uh, I'm not sure exactly where it fits. So on on board reports, uh I'm not sure exactly where it fits in. But um so as people found out that I'm on the on the board. They feel more comfortable calling and saying, hey, this, hey, that relating to. Just trying to, you know, be heard. Um again, I don't know exactly if this is where I need to be talking about them. I know some of the stuff will probably fall under executive session, but uh. One of the main things was they'd like to get the community more involved and um I guess. Um some of the, I guess there's a QR code usually that we put on here where people can interact. Does that sound right? If they put it on the agenda.
I think, right.
Yeah, so that way instead of sending YouTube links or something, you can send a QR code. Um that's something that somebody called about. The other one was uh. I guess, I'm sorry.
No, yeah, we've that it's still not on here. So this is like the the third month since we've not had it on here.
Help me out.
I don't know what you're talking about. I wasn't aware of anything. So what do you want? What are you wanting?
The the YouTube QR code. It I I don't think it's a you thing, Ms. Diana.
The one that was previously here was not going anywhere. When I clicked on it, it'll check it, it just gave me about blank screen. Um so do you all want a QR code on the agenda?
That's what they're asking.
Yeah, that, yes, I guess. Instead of sending links, they probably want to share the QR code.
So like if this is posted in those spots around town, they cannot type in the whole YouTube link. And and that's not really feasible. There should be a QR code so they can scan it and it pulls up the. It pulls up the YouTube channel. And I mean, I I've pulled up the QR code myself, so I know it's working. I I'm not sure why it's not on here.
Where where do you get?
Well, I know that. Because I had mentioned it to Annabelle that, or maybe uh Gini, I'm not sure. I mentioned it to somebody. That when I clicked, uh I checked it to make sure that it was working, it wasn't. So that was, and it was removed, but I was not ever told that we needed a new one, so.
So where should it be then? On the agenda? We'll have it on there.
Uh the next one is uh. There's some concern about, I don't know if there's an exmin- administrator schedule. Uh so that people can show up to games, uh you know, an administrator and stay throughout the whole game, I understand. At one of the games, some fans got kicked out, two or three of them, I believe. Good friends, great people, but you know, they they got, they enjoyed the game a little too much and they got.
Your dark place.
Yes, I think so. And they got thrown out. And the first thing I got is where's our administrators? Why are they not there? They're getting, you know. So I'm not saying all the administrators need to be there, but maybe to facilitate, maybe we can have a schedule where you say, hey.
We have a schedule and I know we have an administrator each game, so.
Yeah.
If you give me the exact game stuff, I'll find out what to issue.
Okay, yeah. So um also, I don't know about here, but I know back. In other schools, the administrators kind of had a spot where they stayed and you always knew where to look to instead of, you know.
Trying to find him.
Yes, they don't know who the administrator is or who they can go to. I guess they're just basically there for crowd control if they need to or.
Yeah, they're there.
Emergencies.
Administrative decisions.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'll find out. But I know they're, I know they're assigned and should be there all the time.
Thank you, Mr. Valeros.
The father and daughter dance quite well. There was a lot of people, thank you, while your staff that was that was really good turn up. And that um good, thank you guys for being here.
Got one. Sorry, I got like ten phone calls, so I'm just, I'm trying to not. Yes, okay. So another one is um, I guess. One of my biggest, or or the one that, two of them, I guess, one of the bigger complaints is. People not staying throughout the full week and putting in the full weeks uh in. You know, Fridays, Dr. Graves, you've left early or not showed up on Fridays, or you've been leaving early on Thursdays. And I believe that's trickling down to the rest of the administrators and the rest of the people that are here. I'm trying to improve the community.
Do without permission, but I I take personal leave.
Okay. Well, I get, I believe everybody else does too, so you know, the the minute you leave, they're like, well, he's not here. I'm just, I'm bringing that 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 one I got about four calls on, just that one alone, so. I feel like it's important for me to throw it out there and we need to address it because. How can we expect the students to show up to school and demand attendance? And try to change policy when we ourselves aren't living up to what we're supposed to. So that needs to be something. And a lot of this, we're probably going to handle in executive session for sure. But I want the people to know that we're trying to do what's best for the people, what's best for the students, and also the rest of the people that work here. Because there's good families here that work here that I know personally and. You know, they're fighting hard to want to stay here because administration, you know, you guys set the tone for high school. And middle school and elementary and, you know, I'm not saying. Everybody is the same, but there are some departments that are slacking off a little more than others. And, you know, with that being said, that's probably why. We aren't having the numbers that we'd like to have with graduation and stuff. Or students sticking around as well.
Thank you, Mr. Valeros.
Yeah.
All well received.
That's it.
Item four E, directory reports. Do we have any?
So just wanted to let y'all know that the field house roof is now done, so it's still, um we're working on a little bit on that metal side of it. We need to do anything there. Because the metal was still, but we need to do a little bit of work just to get it and stuff on there, so I'm working on getting something done there. Um Dr. Graves, Ms. Harris and I went to legislative session back in. Uh March, something like that, I don't know, but last year, August, I think. Anyway, we asked for some special money, so we're trying to get so we can. Go on there and redo a bunch of the inside of the field house, so that's kind of what we're waiting on now. Now the roof is sealed up and it won't be leaking very much, so that could be our next big project. Other than that, we're just, I guess, still going.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other directory reports? No? Okay.
Couple of things. Good evening, everybody. Um staying busy, taking care of business at the middle school. Uh we're getting ready for parent teacher conferences. We'll have those. Across the district of course, Thursday, Union Friday morning. Uh spending a lot of time putting together some really cool things for parents to come and take a look at, so hopefully we'll. We'll stay busy during those times. We're preparing to administer the access test that will start for us on February twenty-fourth. And um our third annual parent appreciation night is scheduled for April twenty-ninth at six P M. Still trying to figure out how we're going to feed people because that's become quite expensive, but. We're working on some creative solutions to that. Uh also some end of year field trips. We try to establish. Uh an end of year field trip for each grade level, something in the area. I I know Mr. Coles has been awesome in partnering with me on, as an example, taking our seventh graders. Uh to Fort Stanton, which is just down the road, but it's such an amazing place and just. Rich in New Mexico history and that, well, seventh graders learn New Mexico history, so. Anyway, we're working on um that, trying to solidify something like that for each grade level. And um our state testing window begins April seventh. It also happens to be when um USDA is going to be on campus, so. Sure what that's going to look like, but we're going to make the best of it. Um and then making decisions. For next year, some are PD planning. Busy trying to really protect instructional time. Minimize classroom disruptions and things like that. Not that we have many, but. We're in, we're in that crunch window, so just really trying to be intentional about those things.
Thank you, Ms. Harley. Can I ask the parent, you said you're trying to find creative solutions for parent appreciation night? As far as funds or?
Just for the food, um the State Student Council Association has helped with the speaker. But you know, the last couple of years, well, the first year um. Kira was able to fund the meal piece at that one day. I don't remember, we did what, but we split the cost. And um last year. I think that we had some fundraising ones that were left, but. This year, dollars are tight and Ms. Shelley is always so good to do what she can. Um that he will create, so. We're just working on it, sending email to staff, asking if they had some ideas. They kind of gave us some things to work. Uh the parent night, April.
Twenty ninth.
Twenty ninth.
Right, because high school does a four point O banquet, right?
We usually do it in March, but that's when we can get our adjusted years. We work with Artesia High School. I'm getting it in a written rec and written med case words.
Alright, thank you. Is that it for directory reports? Yeah?
Teacher department, we will be having our turn station audit coming Thursday.
Alright, thank you, Mrs. Okay, um item four F, superintendent report.
I have a big announcement. And that, Mr. Bailey, for a minute. We have the only band director who will march and play in the municipal parade. Courtesy of Dexter Consolidated School, so congratulations, Mr. Bailey. And I just wanted to let the board know that sometime during this month, I will be sending out a uh. Two proposed budget or uh. Policy changes for first reading, next board meeting, and then we'll have a second reading on attendance, school attendance. And then the second one would be on grade integrity. Easier known as grade inflation, it's two things. So just be looking for those. And then this past Friday, when I was out of town, I went on my dime to Wyoming to check out a middle school. And a school district that had plus fifty percent proficiency rates. Mathematics and English to see if we can learn some things from them to do better here. So um. They have a lot of the same issues that we have in schools, but they do some things differently and I'll be sharing that with you.
Hey, um item five, public forums. So this, so I don't know if we have any. We'll take names. Okay, so uh again, this is a public forum. Uh we appreciate you guys coming and wanting to speak and all of the. All of the things, we really value your input. However, as awkward as it is, we're not allowed to give feedback immediately here. We will direct you to the. Direct anybody who wants, wishes to speak to the correct um person. But we, we're, we're hearing you, we're listening, so don't feel like we're just, it it's awkward for us too, so just so you guys know. Yeah, so we have Ms. Rebecca Franco.
And um we put down Robert Franco and Rebecca Franco because we are both part of the DDAA and I don't know if anybody knows. I'm Rebecca Franco, Rebecca Rock Daniel's mom, um president of the DDAA. And I have been for at least um, I think about eight years or so I've been president. Been part of the DDA for fourteen years. This year. Um that means since my son was in kindergarten. So and everything that we have done in these last thirteen years has been for the community. And for every single activity in Dexter. We don't do it just for the football team. We don't do it just for the basketball team. We do it for all activities. That's from elementary school to high school. And I myself don't get a vote in how we spend our money, okay? I get to take the motion of the people and I get to receive the papers and we have a request for. But I don't get a vote on how any, how the DDA spends their money. Okay, so um it's just came to my acknowledgement that um there's been talk about some. I guess just administrators of Dexter to coaches and other parents that. Um I pick and choose who I want to give money to. Well, that's not me, because if it was picking and choosing, sometimes I would want to say no, but it's not my place. You know what I mean? It's not, I, that's not what I do. And I've also given to many of those kids in different kinds of programs for my own personal business. Choose support them, choose sponsor them, and those even are from some groups that. I didn't even know that that was even a group in Dexter, but they came and asked me for sponsorship and I have money, I'm willing to give of my own personal money. Okay, so when somebody comes to me and or tells me that we are now picking and choosing from the DDAA after. All this long of how we're spending our money or why it just makes me want to think that maybe we don't want to do the DDA. Maybe the DDA should not exist whatsoever. Because until I really wish my presence, we won't do anything. That's all there is to it. But I don't want to be that way with the community. I do not. I want to help the community. I want to help the kids. I want to help, but I don't want to fight with any more administrative people anymore. I love to hear already with that. And that's what I have to say before I get really more upset. And I don't know if you want to take some time to say something.
We've been doing it for quite a while. We asked for volunteers and.
Yeah, we weren't totally on volunteer. We don't get paid. We spend every single Friday night that there's a game, we're there in the daytime setting up. We're there from three o'clock in the afternoon when we take out our food till ten o'clock, eleven o'clock at night cleaning up. Because we don't leave the plays event. We clean up all of that area there ourselves. I mean, sometimes we even have to clean up the pavilion part before we've been pull out our tables and stuff because there's grass thrown there. There's dirt, there's whatever. Um the tables are always pulled up there. We always have to move them, so we always do setup. We always do all that stuff. It's all on volunteer time. We never ask a penny. Or anything other than other people to come and help us volunteer. And some, for some reason, we've gotten people who are from Roswell, from Artesia. And that don't have kids or anything, and they come and they volunteer their time to help us at the football game. You know what I mean? And that's pretty sad that our own community can't even give up thirty minutes of their time to come and help us even set up three tables. Or anything like that. I've never ever heard. The principal of Dexter even say thank you to the DDA for anything that we've done. Never heard the um A D this year even come to us and even ask us. If we want to help with any other programs like the basketball tournament that came up or anything like that. For some reason, there's a personal thing there. And we have to get past it because if I can get past it to give it to other people, I'm sure you guys can do it too.
Thank you, Mr. Franco. Uh Mr. Franco.
I just wanted to bring the thing up about volunteers. We've asked every year since we've been part of it. And we probably get one person that's local, maybe, and then the rest are from Roswell or our teacher. We've, we've sent out a. Uh bill to La Prino Foods and they're the only ones that responded. And they have no, nothing to do with this community, yet they come and volunteer and they'll bring them. Well, the last time, I think they brought like eight people. Again, they have nothing to do with this community except. Meet everyone and that's their goal is to show that they're supporting everybody in Chatham County community.
Thank you. Thank you for your work. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Val.
Item six, uh business. We have um item A, presentation of possible CTE partnership by Jenna McKinley.
Ms. Jenna and. So Jenna McKinley, she works with a consortium from Texas to Southeast. Ms. Jenna McKinley, she works with a consortium from Texas to Southeast Mexico. And, uh, she can explain to you what we're, uh, trying to get involved in.
Perfect. Thank you so much. I appreciate you guys allowing me to come present to the board today. Uh, my name is Jenna McKinley. And I came with, um, Education Partnership of the Permian Basin. Um, so, how do I?
You can just tap on this.
Okay, um, so today I just wanted to really come introduce myself to you guys, um, and talk about the model, the funding that's occurred and then our planning year. Um, so as you may know, um, I started this position just recently. So it was February first that I transitioned to be the director for the VRC. Um, prior to the position, I worked, um, in education. I was an educator for over fifteen years. Worked in various capacities, um, the last three to four years, been mostly in workforce development. Um, two years, the last two years, I've worked with this organization, um, Education Partnership of the Permian Basin. And, um, and basically what I've done is, um, worked on variance initiatives. So I started with the Early Childhood Action Network, um, which is in the Permian Basin region, and then also the Grow Our Own Action Network. Some of you guys might have heard about the work that we were doing in that space. Um, we created an energy pathway, um, for Permian Basin. So we had two, um, pilot districts on the Texas side and two on the Mexico. Two in Mexico are Hoffs and Carlsbad School. So, um, we have a ton of kids, you know, going into the oil and gas industry. So my role was primary to build partnerships with oil and gas companies, um, build partnerships with the school districts and also the college presidents in the region. Um, so I spent a lot of my time building those partnerships with funders, um, with employers, then also, um, community and schools. So it's been a really great two years. Um, but during that time, um, I came to meet with all the districts in the region and Dexter happened to be one of the schools. So when I got the job, I came to meet your previous superintendent, have really great conversations with her, um, followed up with her, uh, various sessions, and she was always really excited about starting a partnership. Um, one of the things that I had mentioned to my previous boss was how close you guys are to, uh, Dex, I mean, to Hangar Men and the Garthor Schools. And, uh, seemed like all of the superintendents really were interested in doing a role collaborative. So I was excited to share that this could be a possibility. Um, they even talked about it before. They had said many years have passed and they've always talked about doing something to give students more access to programs. Um, but never came to life, you know, with small districts, you guys wear many hats and we understand that. So, um, after conversations, we brought everyone together. We met one day at Lake Arthur Schools and gave us presentation and basically of what we're doing, um, for Permian Basin Innovation Zone. So Permian Basin Innovation Zone is on the Texas side. So, uh, one of my colleagues, um, had got hired to run this program. Um, and I would kind of support her with pathways she was doing in addition to my role here with Energy Pathway. Um, so got really excited about the things that they were doing there and I can share a little bit about the model with you guys. Um, so it's called a role collaborative. And basically we came in, talked to the schools, um, we shared that we can possibly have a partnership with each district and then also higher end partners. So we brought in E N M U R and also Southeast Mexico College out of Carlsbad. Um, it was great because everyone was really excited. You know, the number one concern to handle is what about funding? Who's going to do this? So we, as a nonprofit organization, said, you know, we can do this. I can take this in addition to my role that I'm doing and just try to facilitate this to try to see if we can get a grant. So we did apply for a grant. And, um, through this structure that we have, we have ourselves as a core dating entity, um, has a partnership contract and of course the transparency with the school district. So, uh, we have the experience staff, so we were able to share everyone and, um, make that connection. Um, so, um, I'll talk a little bit more about the grant in just a second. I did want to share about the PBIZ though on, um, the PBIZ, this is the innovations on that we have in Mid and Odessa area. So it does include, um, Odessa, UTBB. We have Crane, Grand Falls, Royalty, and McCamey are the three districts that they're working on. Um, they partner as well, um, just through the similar model. Um, so we are piggybacking off this to bring this to your community. Um, basically they started, you know, being boots on the ground, visiting with these employers and saying like, what, what do you guys need for your workers? Um, and this is beyond oil and gas. We're talking, um, people that are in the medical industry and the tech industry and other industries. And, um, we really got some really great partners on board, including the Workforce Board, um, which they have on the Texas side and also philanthropy, um, helps out. So they ended up doing a medical, a welding, an educator, and then oil and gas pathway. Um, so each of those met the needs of the regional job market. And they were able to, um, either share instructors or they're able to, um, transport students to various schools. So, um, these school districts are similar in size to yours. So it would really need to see how, um, two school districts that are, they're a little farther apart than you guys were able to share welding instructor, for example, because, um, if they were to try to do it on their own per se, they wouldn't be able to staff a full-time welding instructor, at least on the numbers. But they realized that students are interested in this. They needed to get, you know, into a program that is engaging to them. And, you know, I've heard a lot of things that you guys mentioned today about graduation rates and community engagement and also engagement of the students, what that looks like. And I feel like this can be a solution to that. Um, it was there and we've just been saying over and over again, um, the success rate for that. So we're about two years behind them for PBIZ. It's really great to see some statistics now rolling out and what that looks like and talk with those districts. So super excited to bring this here. Um, we're now in our planning year for the VRC. VRC is the Valley Role Collaborative. That's the name that, um, superintendent came up with, um, earlier this year. And we've been working really hard, um, together to just identify, um, what these look like. So so I can start here. Um, one of the first things that we did was do a labor market analysis. We worked really closely with a company that was able to provide us, um, all the statistics on Chavez County and what the needs are for jobs. So that was the number one thing we wanted to do first. Um, to study state impact. So they did this labor market analysis. They talked about the things that are high need, high wage careers in the region. And, um, three that we really wanted to focus on was education, healthcare, and computers and math, um, which were, um, key to this area. Students primarily go into those fields where there's a lot of jobs that were listed on, online for job openings. So, um, the work that we've done so far is we tried to narrow down some pathways for next school year. So for next school year, um, the steering committee, which is made up of, um, the three superintendents for the schools, um, in Eastern, including UTBB, um, for myself, uh, we have, um, three pathways. So we have the medical pathway, which will be housed, um, at Dexter. Um, you guys already have an amazing medical program. I've been working really closely with Tom, um, and also your teacher on that program. It's already got some really great things lined out for your students, as you guys might already know, um, which includes CPR, first aid, um, certification, stop the bleed, and a patient care tech, and then he's going to tend to be a CNA and phototomy certification. So, um, as that's growing, we're going to be working with them really closely this year to expand that, bring more options to students in the medical field and, um, help them out there. Uh, so nothing will change in terms of the district offerings for Dexter. But we will have two new programs students can, um, be sent to in collaboration with the other districts that we'll be adding on. So they will have access to more, but also sharing this program with the other schools who did not have this access to this program before. The students from Lake Arthur and Hangar Men School will now be able to take classes nearby the program. As students are entering these other programs, it will open up seats. Um, we're talking this next month about capacity and what that looks like. So, um, Tom will be getting you a number of seats that will be available for students. It may not be many our first year. Um, same with the other schools, but we're going to work together to try to see what that looks like. Um, and then, um, to the new programs, so these programs are not yet at the other schools. This will be completely new for those districts. And for, for you guys as well. So something that we're working on together is working really closely with Eastern to develop the software and programming, um, program. Students will leave with, um, certifications in Google and also computer programming and Python. And this will be, um, offered certifications through E N M U R. So we're already working with their, um, person there. There's a new, um, director of technical studies. She's working really closely with me to ensure that that gets all approved in time for that. And then another thing, um, she actually came from the education department there before her enroll. So she, um, was able to get us approved for the teaching and training pathway, which, um, is, was already against the program with you guys. It just is now cleaned up, um, to where we're able to now offer certification um, for early childhood education, early literacy. So we're looking at two different tracks there. Um, good thing about this one is that each school district could possibly host that, a throne district. It's not going to need additional equipment. Not really going to need a lot of things that are going to be expensive. It could be held in a regular classroom. Um, students can be able to go to an elementary school and get the hours that they need and Eastern will accredit those hours. Be able to get those hours and then, uh, they'll go once a week to also for the class. So those are those statistics I was talking about. Um, as far as MOUs and district commitment, so, um, it's part of the planning process. Um, we are working with the New School Venture Fund. So with that New School Venture Fund that, um, I had brought up earlier, um, it's been a process. It's a, a national organization. And basically they are just really wanting to see what this is going to do, um, because they've never funded like this before. Um, of course, we're not the first of this model to be done. Um, we started off with RSIV, which is in South Texas, you know, is like further than. Um, that's where, um, PBIZ got, um, their idea from. Um, so now that we have PBIZ, we started another one last year. It's called BB Rise. It is in the Alpine area. Uh, so Ross, Alpine, those one part of the district. Um, so we have a director there, um, who's in the same spot as I am. And then you guys are the first in the Mexico. So really exciting, um, you know, all three school districts, small but mighty. I keep saying you guys are awesome. Everyone that I've met and worked with so far, um, always has fresh ideas. They're really went ready to work and just excited to be able to bring the best opportunity that they did. So I love seeing that. Um, really excited to be able to transition out of focus on this project. I felt like I was spread in, you know, between all the projects before and, um, since February first, I've been able to really be boots on the ground, meeting with the community and seeing what's next. Um, so we've gotten a lot done in the last few weeks to get ready for next year. So really exciting. Um, but like I said, the, um, New School Venture Fund, they have a lot of collaborative work that we're doing. We're working closely with them, um, with the two partners. They put us in a cohort there. So Tom's been meeting me online and we've been doing these courses together to be able to just get ideas from other school districts when they're doing how they're improving their schools. And that's beyond role collaborative. So great resources there from them. Um, they funded our, um, first year completely. We're pending funding for next year for the first year. And then, um, I've also been meeting with, um, other philanthropists to try to see about, um, sustainability that looks like. So, um, we're funding there and then, um, we're hoping that with these presentations, I really want to, um, have the superintendents be presenting these at the state level. Trying to get a eye on this program and be a model for students. We're fifteenth in education right now and you guys are going to be up next. That's important. And we're going to be changing statistics here and it's really exciting. For MOUs, um, we have collaborative goals that we'll share. Everything's going to be approved through each of the boards. So as we're in those steering committees, we've already been building on discussions of different things, all school difference have, um, different calendars and different schedules and what those look like for transportation, what's available. All those conversations we're having and figuring out the logistics. And as we're coming up with the plan and having these leaders decide these decisions together and what's, what might be best, um, they're going to bring those to you guys for planning. Um, so everything will be through that. It will be processed. Um, in terms of partnerships, same thing. Any of the outside leaders, um, everything will be through the, uh, approach of MOU process, um, funding budgets, resource allocation, parameters, all of that. Uh, so we are actually, uh, in the process of working on the MOU. Uh, we're hoping to get that to you next month and you guys should have or see something like equal. Um, so we can have that. So you guys have some time to review. And by the end of spring, we should have that reviewed and approved through all districts. Um, so really excited to keep working with Empower Schools and State to to get this going. I think that, um, really fine for your school district. Any questions?
I don't have questions. I just want to say thank you for being such a forward thinker and bringing it to us beforehand. And that way we can be forward thinking on these things too. That's super important.
Yes, for sure. And if you guys ever have any questions, want to meet with me one to one, um, this is my primary focus right now. If you guys have ideas for, um, volunteers that maybe we haven't tapped into, or if you guys hear opportunities on things that we could put in for, let us know. We're always looking for new ideas and, of course, um, next step, once this gets going, I'm going to have Tom with me. Tom present at the state level and all eyes are going to be on Dexter because we want to bring those leaders here and have our secretary of ed here talking highly about Dexter and, um, these other districts and showing the rest of the state what opportunities that will.
So I have a question. The, this, how many CTE programs are in Dexter? Five CTE instructors, instructors? No.
I have eight pathways currently.
Do any of them end with actual certifications, like to where they go into the workforce?
So this year, the CNA, uh, will have nine students that will graduate with certifications. Um, I think it's a hundred. Five students in breaks that will.
In what?
Breaks.
Breaks.
Auto breaks. And then, um, she appears has welding as well. Four. Four students in welding that will graduate with tangible certificates that they can go to work, not just a completion. It's an actual tangible certificate that they have been training and they can get a job.
Well, the students will also graduate with the consumer court and recognition and graduation. That takes three years to get to the court. Some of our pathways began three years ago and some have started this year. So they're already in the process.
Okay, and the panel for, so, so for this, the Dexter community, you have all eight as the panel or since, cause I'll, I assume all these instructors need to, you know, understand that if we move through with this, they'll be actually taking other students in as well, correct?
We're currently starting the, um, twenty-five, twenty-six school year with only the medical pathway, um, which has already been discussed with the medical teacher. Um, he and Tom will be talking about capacity and letting me know this month how many seats would be available based on current enrollment and what that looks like. Um, so that's, that's taking in other students, what that looks like. So it won't, will not affect current enrollment um, for Dexter schools with the current pathway. So right now it'll be that pathway. Um, it won't be enhancing because now, next year, students will have options to take the um, educator pathway or the IT pathway as well, which is not previously offered. So those will be two new pathways that we'll be exploring, working on together, twenty-five, twenty-six, and then um, twenty-six, twenty-seven, um, our superintendents are already really excited because they're wanting me to look further into a renewable energy pathway. So we did, um, recently expand the PBIZ for raw energy and that's another huge thing in the Mexico. So Next Era Energy is a big company that's also coming to the Mexico. Um, we've already built that partnership with them and they're boots on the ground, working with us in Odessa, Midland area. Try to build up students to work in their power plants. And you guys also have power plants that are here. So we're looking at, um, for the next school year, either being a renewable energy or oil and gas, whichever they decide. Um, we'll review our labor market analysis, see if that's what those are working on there.
That's or.
Yes.
It's either or.
Uh, it taps into a unique group of students, right? That are, uh, failing and not coming to school. And this gives them an application to be interested. I want to come, you know, a lot of them, you know, when I come talk to schools, they say, you know, this stuff be excited to be here. You know, when I visit for the other energy pathways because my dad, you know, works in oil and gas. I wanted to learn about measurement. He's so excited just to hear me talk about, you know, what a pig is or, um, how to read a measure tape or, you know, what this piece of pipe is and what it does. And I can explain to him everything that's in and out of the pipe, where it goes and how to use tools effectively. You know, all of that stuff is just base knowledge. Uh, but, you know, I'd love to give you guys a tour of some of the other labs because I know Tom and I also have informal conversations about future things that are going on with Dexter and the growth that could be possible. Future things that are going on with Dexter and the growth that could be possible. Um so it's exciting to see that, you know, there's potential for growth there. For a new oil and gas lab or renewable energy lab and we have all of these partners that are in this area that they want workers, they want skill workers. And they wanna put back and this will really tap into that of community engagement that you guys talked about and also student engagement. To bring them to one of these schools, people look forward to it, it's really great, we have also internship opportunities, I've worked really closely with. Community strategic partnerships, like we're chipping kids on uh which could be an option for your students this year. On break tours and they work for oil and gas um professionals over the summer, so a lot of the big um. Partners that we have in the crown that area, they actually pick kids out and they pay them over the summer and they come back and they're really ready to go to school. Because they're excited to learn more and they wanna be up there next year and they only take some of the students a year. But these students are graduating now with jobs that are entry-level oil and gas jobs, but they're also paying for their college. So it's not just that, you know, we're training the workforce to just go work on a rig. You know, we're training them for entry-level positions, yes, but sometimes these positions pay for the college, they it pays them to be an engineer if they wanted to.
Cool.
So um. Friday, as a matter of fact, the CCRV at state level, the CTE um. Actually, this region voted and dropped IT and the STEM and it was replaced with the renewable energy gas. Um so I'm concerned about the IT because of flat state or regional priority anymore. Um but it's been replaced with this natural gas that she's referring to um industry. That's what excites me about what you're saying because that is what the region has adopted for this area in place of STEM.
Yes.
Um and educators pathway, we actually started last year. And we could, we have connected and it's new because a lot of people are like, oh, I don't wanna be a teacher, I don't wanna, but we're we're. Training the students, yeah, this is a good thing, it's our real profession and plus some of these others that may wanna be a coach, you know, try the education pathway. And you know, we've had some, we've had three successful students um go on and continue their education with these teachers and. Connected them with like uh the golden apple and and things like that, so um. Education, I know, is a state priority um as well, so. A lot of these that you're presenting, I'm super excited about because it enhances what we have been trying to do here the past few years. But um. Is, has there been conversation with head and the region priorities at all?
Yes, so the conversations that were held um were more based on how ag and energy are in the same cluster, so it was. Here's more towards those fields, um however, the two months prior to that, they made that decision for IT. Um not sure if we could still undo that, but if, I mean, if that's been already in change, then that could be something that we fuck into. If that fits better, um because, I mean, there's often the only thing that is that. That pathway, you would have to have space, you know, so we have to have somewhere that already has lab availability, be able to bring that stuff in and the lab. Does cost money, um some of the outfits that I outfitted for the other schools, I mean, we pay. Two hundred thousand dollars, you know, for year one for equipment, but we got donors. But that's not always feasible for a small district, getting on size of classroom where the last thing to do. But it's doable, it just depends on where we're at, what we wanna do, um that's why we were thinking more year two, um year one, they thought it might. If we, if we could figure out the logistics, I'm sure it could be doable, cause I mean, the renewable energy pathway is already in the process for Texas and we're just. Basically gonna be flipping that over and change.
I mean, on on Friday's. Meeting, it was a shock to the public ever, but yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's kind of where our headspace was, was sustainability funding, right? All of this coming from Glare Province and, you know, even the PY Foundation. Is very interested in this work here um with these three districts and they're wanting, you know, to support us, but. Um you know, we don't know sustainability map either for so many years, we really wanted to be a stop. Funding with the state, though, that something that is so dangerous. Who think you stand, you know, for that part, but.
Thank you, Jen.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, item six B, approval of revised twenty-four, twenty-five calendar. Dr. Graves, do you wanna tell us a little bit about that or?
Yeah, um. I was gonna ask the board's permission to revise this year's calendar, that April twenty-first, which is that Monday after. Eastern being in person day as opposed to a remote day. Um, remote days have a tendency not to be in the student's best interest for two reasons. Um very few get engaged and number two, it winds up being basically a day off. And so we have the opportunity to have kids here in school and I think that would be a good change.
I.
No, go ahead, sorry.
I personally don't, don't um like the idea of changing the calendar. Um right now at this point, I think. I mean, it's that it's done. That's just, that's just.
Whatever the board decides, I just brought it up because I have a concern about it and you'll notice in next year's calendar, there are no remote dates because uh. Research has showed in across not just New Mexico, but throughout the country that remote days are ineffective and not in the kids' best interest, so. Feel like my obligation as superintendent to at least give you guys the option to change that calendar.
Yeah, I agree with. If you're on that, I don't, I mean, we voted or the board voted on this last year and families have made plans, I'm sure um. Go less teachers, sailors. They're here all the time, so they too would like to leave every Friday, but they don't always get to, so.
Well, I'm like I say, I'm flexible and I'll do it.
Yeah.
Those, but it's also to give you some option.
Thank you.
Thank you, any further discussion or comments or? I mean, are there things in place for remote learning? I mean, I guess that that's right, like if we have remote learning. I it it can work, I guess, but are we send, are, I mean, are we being forward thinking on the remote learning days? Or is it just because of lack of preparation that we're not being forward thinking?
I think.
I mean, I think, I I think the intent on that was have a remote learning, you're forward thinking, you know what you're planning for and so. Can you do that?
In the per, in the perfect world, remote learning shouldn't be perfect, it shouldn't work, teachers should have quality lesson plans there and instructions. And things for the kids to do, so for example, that doesn't happen consistently and for a significant number of our kids, that doesn't work. Um I actually had two phone calls on that from staff members and their comment to me was. Well, we we need to have the remote day because we're gonna be flying somewhere. So that tells me it's really hard to engage with students on a remote learning day if you're traveling. Um it's just why I brought it up. Again, I'll do whatever the board, you know, we can just keep the calendar the same and. Next year, you'll notice there aren't any remote days, so I was just trying to get ahead of the curve, I hate to do things that statistically. Aren't effective, but. I can understand your concerns and concern.
So we need a hundred and eighty days, right? Uh and we currently have a hundred and eighty-two, counting the remote days, this remote day and I believe in the whole. Yeah, we have ninety-one, ninety-one days on the first half of the year and I think ninety-one.
The state actually just lawsuit changed that as well.
Right, so we're going, I mean, it's based on hours now, so. Or it has been, it, yeah, we wanna work on, okay, do we have any further discussion or motion? I. Go ahead, go ahead. I move that we um just leave the calendar um for this year the way that that we have it. We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second? All second, all in favor? So we will just leave the calendar as is, April twenty-first will be a remote learning date. Um item sixty, discussion and possible vote on bar adjustment authority, and so. Any discussion on this, so this, this, it's kind of. I'll be honest, it's kind of hard to watch the the audit and them expecting us to do the bars. Well, because we've been doing the bars, but we still have, I mean, they're not huge findings, right, but their expectation is that those would be fixed at this point. But then they're not and we've been doing the bars and so I don't know, I don't know which way to go on this.
I guess my only comment I make on this is that, you know, I know we talked about it four months previously and you gave us the authority and one of the things that the auditor said is. She made it crystal clear that they appreciate the fact that the administration has the op. Opportunity to get those bars in on time without word approval and then come back to the board. Depending on when those bars come through, I think the thing the board may not realize is when the state tells us that we have to make a line item transfer in bars. It's not really an option that I even have to make a decision, I just have to do what they say, and then when we do bring it to the board. You really don't have too much of an option other than to say yes, you gotta make a change. So I think what the auditor was pointing out, and you correct me if I'm wrong, Jeanie, but basically it gives us the chance to do it. In time when they ask us to, so that we don't have the possibility of losing any. And then we just bring it to you the next month.
But did, did we not have the bars last year or? So I guess that's my question, if the, if that was already open and available to be done in twenty twenty-four. But yet the finding was that it wasn't done in time, I mean, what do we need to do? I I'm not understanding if that was already an option, why there was still that finding, I guess.
I have a hard time talking about last year, but I know Jeanie or even Lorena could explain. What the issue is when a bars comes through, why it's so important for us to be able to respond as quickly as possible.
Well, I think we've had the discussion before, I I mean, we we've had the discussion, I think that. From from my perspective, we've, we've seen a lot of things come through, I mean, we have a whole master plan, we didn't even know we paid for. And so it's hard to, it's hard to sit up here and and face our constituents and know where money is going, we don't know where money is going. Right, I mean, we don't know and we can say, you know, previous administration, we can say no, I mean, at the end of the day, we're the ones here. And we're the ones having to say, oh, well, heck, we didn't know where this, where that was paid for because we never saw it anywhere and so.
And I see your concern, I guess what I'm doing is basically, you know, we we pay these auditors to come and make recommendations to us and I felt pretty clear that she. Her recommendation is that it stay the way the board has already given us permission to make the necessary adjustments and then bring it to the.
Well, she, she said that she knows we now have, that now there is authority to do that, I don't think she was aware that there was already previous authority.
Well, you know, if it's, if it's uh. Something we need to take care of, we, I have no problem coming in and.
Having a meeting.
Convening, yeah, having a meeting and actually approving the bars or so that it is done in a timely manner. Also making us well aware of what's actually happening, instead of finding out the following month or, you know. That's not an issue at all, that just gets us more involved for the town of Dexter.
Your, your guys' decision, I mean, I'm I'm good either way, just even know that you'll be called for special meetings periodically.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
That's fine, I mean, I mean, as long as there's three of us here, right, hopefully five, but three.
Yep.
And further discussion or? Motion? I can't make a motion, guys. So just move to rescind the authority and take it back, I suppose. Okay, so I move that we rescind the bar adjustment authority. We have a motion on the floor? We have a second?
I'll second you.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay, item. Six D, discussion and possible vote for monthly finance meetings, this is kind of going back to the finance subcommittee and audit committee discussion that we had earlier. Um. I don't know if you guys wanna do monthly finance meetings to alleviate that and that way we're all here um. Or as many of us can be here, we could do it the pre, I mean, we could do it the day of, I mean. I'm just throwing stuff out there, I'm just throwing ideas out, we could do it the, the day of, do like a work, a work before, we could do uh. Were, were you guys doing Thursdays or?
I would.
Like a Thursday evening or.
I would rather have everybody like before the meeting and just come and that way we're all getting the same.
Cause Linda said she can't be here until.
That, that's okay, I mean, there's probably months when I'm okay to leave a little bit early and be here on time, but. I probably won't be able to do it every month. But I think it's important that everybody's. Or the majority of us, I think, is able to to look at things and if y'all have any questions and stuff like that, so.
So it'd be the Monday before?
No, the same Monday, like, like today, but earlier, like at five instead of six.
It's gonna make it really, it's gonna make it long, it's a getter, I mean, I'm just saying, that's gonna be like a long.
I mean, but the evening's already taken anyway, so. I, I, to me, I think it's better than having to schedule another day.
Totally.
Cause you're already taking the time to be here.
Okay, so. You guys make the motion if that's what you, you do, are you okay?
Yes.
Yes, I'm okay.
There, there was a time when we met at six and then the meeting itself didn't start till seven. I mean. It is a struggle for people that have a. Time clock to punch, but then also I feel like that um. Having it earlier allows people to go home earlier.
So I would like to make a motion to have our finance meetings at five every Monday or Monday.
You have a motion on the floor, um do we have a second?
I'll look at that.
Okay, so monthly finance meetings for five P M every Monday of our regular meetings, um we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um item six E, approval of out-of-state travel, avid PD Dallas, Dallas, Texas, June twenty twenty-five for five adults.
Um so part of the avid program requirements. Does require us to attend consecutive training every summer and um. It just builds a lot of support and a lot of professional development, that's one of the things makes this program um successful, so. This will be our second summer training and Ms. Castro will be joining us. Uh as our district's person, we have to designate a district leader as well. And then it will be myself and Ms. Martinez, who is our avid teacher and we're taking two core content teachers. This coming summer, you know, the goal for that is for them to start implementing. The avid strategies that our avid teacher is teaching, we're actually already doing that, but we wanna sharpen those skills. Continue to put out tools in teachers' toolboxes. It's the closest one.
Question, questions?
So that's, how many days is that? Is that just a couple of days?
Uh it's three days of active professional development, we'll travel up, I believe it's the fifteenth. And um they haven't solidified the agenda for the final day. But we'll probably be able to to come home that afternoon.
I see.
But it's, that's still a little fluid.
Yeah, and these, is this like an? Yeah, and these, is this like an in-person deal, or can you guys attend it remotely, is that even?
No, part of the, part of the contract says we have to attend face-to-face.
And so with that being said, what, uh, the funding from, for this is coming from?
I don't know, federal programs? No, actually, this one's coming from R L I N.
What does that stand for, Ms. Castro? Oh, sorry, yeah, it's all right, I just wondered.
When we come, well.
Gotcha.
So that funding is, is closing in on us. So we have to, uh, spend what's left by, um, September. This coming year, because we're not getting that funding.
And so question, I know that you are bringing other P D here, is there a possibility to do that? Rather than, you know, just five going to have P D come here for the summer?
Well, actually, for, for the avid program, it's not, it's, yeah, no, and that's not. Our choice, that's a stipulation through, uh, through the program itself. But next summer, when we have to go for our boarding final. We'll take another cohort of classroom teachers to, for training, does that kind of make sense?
Anybody have any question, comments, discussion?
I move we, um. To make a motion that we approve the out of state travel for the avid professional development. In Dallas, Texas, in June of twenty twenty five.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Hey, um, all in favor? Okay, item six F, approval of out of state travel, Vision National Conference, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, June twenty seven through twenty nine. Potentially four students and one chaperone.
Okay, so you guys approved of middle school for, for potential middle school students to travel. But unfortunately, the, remember I talked about, I'm just waiting on information from our state. But we go, we travel as state delegation. And this year at that meeting, I was waiting for answers from middle school isn't traveling this year. With Vision, so, um, I'm with Mrs. Redd. And she has four young ladies that is willing to, uh. Go from high schools that are, the stipulation is they would. Um, continue to do the leadership program at high school, the student council. So they'll be on student council again next year, and they're all fresh.
And, and the funding for this?
Still, uh, the Title Four and then the sponsors, if I can get them to.
So it's one that you've already approved, we didn't know if we just had to update you or if we needed any higher approvals. And then they potentially forced.
So Title Four and fundraising, right? But now it's just high school students instead of middle school, right?
But I still will be traveling.
With them.
There are four students that I haven't demonstrated, I know they're well, I know how they'll behave on the trip. And I think it's a great base to foster the relationship between middle school and fourth law.
Anybody have any questions on this discussion concern?
I move, we approve out of, uh, out of state travel for the Vision National Conference in Oklahoma City in June twenty twenty five.
So we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, there we go. Um, item six G, approval of out of state travel for Science Spectrum field trip, Love of Texas, April twenty fifth of twenty twenty five. Potentially fifty students, five chaperones, I'm assuming this is elementary.
So every year we go on the field trip up for the last two years. To get hands-on experience for science, and they love it every year, we're just here for. And it's possibly to, um, fifty one, cause they can use.
Yeah. And you guys fundraised for this, I'm assuming?
They were coming from elementary.
Okay.
I move to approve the out of state travel, Science Spectrum, the, to Love of Texas, for the fifty students and the five chaperones.
Fifty one. I second. Then we have a motion on the floor and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, item six H, approval of policy number two thirty one, G C I A, teacher residency program. That was from May of twenty twenty two. Um, Dr. Graves, did we, did we get the information that we needed for that? Cause there was some, there was some wording in there, right? That, that we were concerned about.
Being given, should have asked.
No, we have the policy, but we asked you to get clarification on the wording.
Just because it has some wording, such as if something to the effect of, okay, don't.
Yeah, I know, cause it's a.
But like if, if somebody's doing their student teaching. That basically, we're also having a, have a position available for them after they do their student teaching, so I think. Um, my concern with that was, okay, we, we don't have. I wouldn't mind having student teachers and helping them out, but what if we don't have an open position? Like, we can't just create one, so I, I wasn't understanding that wording completely. So we just needed a little bit of clarification before approving it to make sure that. We weren't gonna be bound, bound to that.
I have a hard time believing they're gonna guarantee employment, but I'll double check it and then we bring it back next month, then I'll clarify it with you and then.
Yeah, and that was, that was the only thing, and maybe it was the way that I was interpreting.
Yeah, I was.
I'll make sure.
Okay. Okay, so, does anybody have any further discussion? You know, do you wanna, somebody wanna make a motion to table that?
I would like to make a motion to table policy number two thirty one, G C I A, teacher's residence program.
Is she specifically looking at, does it somehow guarantee or promise a job?
We do have teacher residency programs going on right now.
Not that I'm aware of residency programs now.
Okay, well, I think they're called, they're, I think they may be called that now though, too, like, student teaching is now called residency, I think. I think they changed the language, but, but with this policy, it, it would be, the implication would be that we would, number one. Pay them, number two, hire them after.
I'll make sure that, I'm as, I'm assuming the board doesn't.
I mean, and it wouldn't be an implication, we have available openings, but obviously, we don't.
I'll check it, and I'll make a recommendation on modification, just out of that.
Okay, did you, did we already?
Uh, she made a motion, okay.
Okay, you made a motion, okay, so, second, okay, all in favor to table? Okay, item six I, approval of policy advisory number two thirty seven, J F B, open enrollment, August of twenty twenty three. Um, does anybody, did anybody read through that one? Uh, so, so, it's, so it's an open enrollment, so. Uh, my question on that was, do we have a district application? On what the standards, when the birth, acceptance or rejection of, of open enrollment students are? I mean, do we have one in place?
Do you have one in place, would you like me to have that for you?
Yes, if we could, I mean. I would, I would like to see what our application process.
Okay, the kids, uh, district order.
Yeah, like what the standards would be for acceptance or rejection.
So what I'll do is I'll, I'll get, um, our policy and get you guys copies of it and put it on the next agenda, that way you'll know if you approve it.
So I would like to make a motion to table the policy advisory number two thirty seven. J F B, open enrollment of this one.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to table, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor to table? Okay, item six J, approval of twenty five, twenty six, calendar. And that should be in our calendar as well.
You'll notice on that calendar, it's incredibly similar to this year's, because there's only so many options we can do with state mandates and dates and. Class and so on and so forth, so. If you see anything that, uh, you want to make recommendations on or modifications on, just let me know, but. Basically, we've had, uh, two meetings here at the district office, it's been sent out to the entire staff. I've got about four or five different requests for changes on days and so on and so forth. Um, several we incorporated, some we could not, just because we couldn't do it legally. So basically, we've got the best of a recommendation for the board to approve.
So I, I looked, I pulled the calendar from last month, and it's the exact same calendar, I believe, so I don't know. Exactly what kind of.
It is, we, we, we just brought the same one back with the.
Same thing.
Initial changes, yes, sir. Cause I haven't gotten any feedback either from board or anybody else to make any changes to the one that we presented, so it's exactly the same. Maybe y'all give me some suggestions, I'd be happy to look at letting me to make those changes. Till I get any, just gonna, you know, keep bringing this one back, this is the best, based on the people that have.
And stuff already else.
And I feel real good about it, uh, we've got an input, followed a process, uh. Unless you have specific things you want to look.
So I, I wanted to see, I mean, I guess I can look it up, but I mean, I was hoping that the board, the whole board would get it in our packets, would be.
You know, that actually send it to you all.
No, 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 the statutes, the P D hours required per grade, per building level, cause I know that that differs. I mean, and obviously days, I mean, you're.
So you only run, run all the state regulations and attach it to it, then put it in your packet? I can do that.
So I'd like. We can meet the students' hours, and then you guys, you have. You know, you have staff that's with you, you have staff that can talk to you. I find it hard to believe that the staff didn't come to you or make suggestions or. Uh, as to what they would like different, I'm sure with the very first thing they would like to see on there is probably a remote day. Right in the same place that we have on this year's, which we're trying to do away with.
Every staff member, you got a copy of this one, and I got no request for that.
Okay.
Um, I also talked to our people that work here, they're real experts on the rules and regulations, what it has to be. And they gave input, and we, of course, adjusted the calendars, so, again, based on the input I got. And what's legal, this is the best recommended calendar for the board. If you guys have any other suggestions, let me know, I'm gonna check them out and. Right now, not as good as it, as it gets, in terms of a recommendation for you guys.
Let's see if somebody from the staff gets back this week.
Oh, I'm guessing they will now that one of them moved it.
Yeah, I picture. Yes, ma'am.
So, um, we threw out the, the calendar to the staff, and, um, Dr. Graves didn't hold. Several, uh, maybe a couple of meetings here in London, and nobody showed up. Um, we did have comments, a few comments come in, but overall, the staff didn't respond. Um, so our, we assume that that's. Okay.
Okay.
Um, just because, and, and that's what we came up following the, the statutes there and, and. And, um. A P D and then, you know, the law, um, so. That's the best we can come up without, without extending the, the, the year or starting earlier.
Okay.
At that.
So all these, um, staff professional development, um, days, are those like here in person? Or are they gonna be like?
They're here, and what we tried to do, it's different from this year's calendar, is to spread them out, instead of having them front loaded or loaded at the end.
Oh, yeah, it, it also went out, it, it was, it was sent out early in the year, in November, late October. And, and we made, they had time to look at it. Um, that, that, the state or the P D days that are there, that's the minimum that the state requires.
Maybe they're afraid to approach you guys, cause they, they tell me, and I, I'm like, okay, I'm sure I'm gonna have two or three options and vote on it. Yeah.
Well, we did get comments, and some were feasible, but some are not feasible, without extending the school year or starting earlier.
Now, I, I guess I would have a hard time believing they're scared to come to us, cause they see me every day, in their classrooms and the school, and so. You know, I think the thing you need to be concerned about with a calendar is. If I let everyone make a calendar, we'll get three hundred and fifty different calendars. And of course, we have the state guidelines and statutes we have to follow, the leadership team works on it. And I send it out to the staff, I give them an opportunity to come to my office, to a meeting, to talk about whatever concerns they might have. And I feel real confident that, uh, this is probably not perfect. But probably better than this year's calendar, and it's a step in the right direction, especially with removing remote days. One thing COVID taught us, and one thing remote days teach us, is that they're very ineffective for kids. Even when teachers do put complete assignments on and interact with kids, very little work it's done.
Well, and one of, one of those P D days at the very beginning is a virtual P D for the teachers to get their. And then, um, one of the changes from last year is that we had all the P D days at the beginning of the year, or from this year. At the beginning of the year, and, um, after the principal's input, it's better if the, if the P D days were scattered throughout the year. Rather than having them at the beginning of the year, because. Like this year, we found out that they need those days throughout the year, the principals to, to. Hold a certain P D or things that they need to change, and things they need to work on. And that's a day that they would be able to do that throughout the year.
Thank you, um, could we, was there a possible way that we could add hours, since that's what we're, the actual statute is, rather than the one eighty? Does that make sense?
Go over the hours, but then we get extra funding for the extra.
Right, but can we just put the hours on here, just so that everybody knows the amount of hours there are? Yeah, eleven forty is the, is, yeah, but I'm saying like, how many do we have? Okay.
Do you just want to have this on the calendar?
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, just informational, I mean, that's the statute, so. We should probably have it on here, especially because it's such a hot topic on the news and all of that, so. Anybody have any discussion, a motion, what do you want to do? And is that how many are embedded in the calendar, or are we going above it? You know what I mean, like, I don't know if this is, if we're barely meeting, or if we are exceeding, does that make sense, like? I mean, we just know it's a hundred and eighty-two days.
I believe we're exceeding the hours.
I mean, I would.
The hours, I don't know about pre-k, but we're exceeding the hours, we get the extra funding for.
Yeah.
We're, we're going eleven seventy. Instruction hours.
Well, pre-k they should be just about right.
Yeah, and they don't, they don't start till later, like a little bit later. Okay.
Pre-k starts the same with. The regular school, right?
Oh, yeah, they do, on here.
I move we approve the, uh, twenty five, twenty six calendar as presented.
And we have a motion on the floor to approve the calendar, do we have a second?
Can I second that, but can we have the revised with all that information on the calendar, and then we could. Information?
You want the hours listed on the calendar, that's my impression, and then you want the regulations, I'll get both of those. And I'll have the hours on the calendar.
I'll second. Yeah, I want to table it. So we can table this, right?
You, you, you would recommend tabling the approval of the calendar?
Yes, I would recommend it, if we get all the information and. Yes, I would recommend it, if we get all the information and have the opportunity to do that.
Okay, well, you'll just have to, the motion's already been made, so you'll just have to vote. I mean, not have to, but that's your choice, okay, so we have a motion on the floor and we have a second, all in favor. We'll just do a roll call vote. So do you you vote, so you voted aye, Ms. Miles? Aye.
No, nay.
I'll tiebreaker yourself, so nay, um, so the motion. Fails, um, so do we have another motion on the floor?
A motion to table. The approval of twenty-five, twenty-six calendar.
Hey, we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Please, we have a motion to table the calendar and a second. All in favor, we'll do roll call vote again, Mr. Davalos.
Aye.
Ms. Lopez, aye, Ms. Miles.
Aye.
Okay, so we will be um, tabling it until we get the regulations. Um, what else, the hours?
So I'll have the regulations.
What else did you, what else have you added? On the calendar, that he can just take a look at? Are you are you good, Mr. Davalos?
I would, let me get some feedback on it, because I got three or four different people that said I would like. You know, maybe we can move this to this, I think I saw somewhere. Yeah, or I could forward them to you, that's.
Okay, item six K discussion of proposed online high school.
Um, good evening, members of the floor. So this is an interesting conversation considering that there's been some talk about virtual schools maybe somewhat not being effective. Um, however, Dr. Grayne's um, brought to my attention that we were losing enrollment to. Some neighboring online schools and asked what could we do to keep our students in Dexter. So um, I told him that the majority of the students that were exiting the high school were going to online. It was very, a very small percentage that was going to um, move to another state. Or move to another school district completely, so. I would say about ninety percent of our um, disenrollments have been to online schools. Particularly one that is um, nearby down the street. In um, the Lake Arthur School District. And so um, I did some discoveries and found out what um, Lake Arthur is doing that or not. So they have a separate online school from their uh, middle school and high school. And um, it has a separate number so that it is Lake Arthur Online, different than Lake Arthur Middle and High School. Um, and how we do their schooling is through edgenuity. And we have that platform. And um, she has a a teacher who monitors those students online daily. Um, that way it's a news can be taken and accounted for for these students. Um, edgenuity also provides a timestamp when these students are logged in, when they're actually doing work. When they're idle, not doing anything, they think maybe if they log in, it'll count as attendance, but we can see how long they're idle. And et et cetera, so. Doctor uh, Grace decided that we needed to move forward and offer this to some students. So as the application process is going through to PED. Um, part of the process is to have the discussion with the board on what the online school would look like. So there would not be any additional funding um, at this time, because we do have a current teacher in place that monitors. Students that currently have dual credit online, as well as they do um, credit recovery through the edgenuity system, so these teachers are already trained. Um, this teacher would take on his students um, starting with the twenty-five, twenty-sixth year. And we're not capped yet, because Dr. Graves isn't quite sure yet, like how many. Students are interested in this, and not every student that applies would be approved to go on to the online school. Now, if we have a student that approaches and says. You know, I'm thinking about going to Lake Arthur just because I'm, you know, trying to finish or I'm high, because they weren't really sure what we could offer them. Uh, we would maybe transition that student online school, maybe there is a financial need and that student needed to go to work. Um, we would try to accommodate that student with the online school so that the student could work. There are some other accommodations that might come up, um, you know, we've had, we have some families that are um. Afraid to come to school because of ICE, maybe we can accommodate their education that way online as well. Um, there's a lot of different avenues and a lot of different reasons, and every student is unique. For that, for that reason, so um. Other things that the um, PED wants us to consider is the technology impact, well, our students, the high school already went to one. So even if we had a new student enroll, they would be assigned a laptop, so the online student would also be assigned uh, the laptop. At this point, an application has been submitted. I believe. Ms. Pobos, you have the letter, right? So that's the letter that needs to be submitted um, this week to PED to complete the um, application pro uh, progress. Um, I have also sent an email out to the staff uh, requesting feedback. And no staff members have um, responded regarding the online school, whether they. Feel good about it or are opposed, so there's not been any feedback at all regarding that. Dr. Graves, do you want to?
Just to cut to the chase, what it does is gives our kids one more option to be able to still be with Dexter Schools. For us to get full state funding and give them an option, I would think it'd be very few and far between, however. When Debbie told me there were several students that were going to Lake Arthur just to get on online education, I said, well, why can't we do that, and she said, well, I think we can. So that's where we're at.
I think my question with that is, if we're having issues with remote learning because we can't keep the kids. Engaged or even on there, what makes us think that we're gonna be able to?
Well, because with this program, it's very few and far between in Orlando, it would be an administrative decision on with your parents, when you have a remote learning day, that's puts everybody. Regardless of whether it's best for them or not. Sometimes online education or remote learning works well for students, it's incredibly rare, but sometimes it does. This would be one of those options where we can take advantage of that, help our numbers out in our districts since we're losing enrollment. Give another option for parents and kids, but. Parents and kids came to me and said, what do you think, Dr. Graves, about online education? I'd say your best education is in the classroom with a teacher, however. There are rare instances where online education was good for kids.
Can we see, can we see the application that was submitted to PED before we move on? Well, and I I I looked at this, so I have a few other questions as well, like, how do we determine who's accepted and who is not? Um, so I know that in this letter, it says, you know, that.
Okay, so for example, um, we're kind of doing um, a trial with two students right now. So I have one student that came to me and said um, that they wanted to drop out. And so I talked to Dr. Graves about it and um, he said, do what you need to do to keep this kid in school. So I approached the the child and um, said, look, this is what we can do for you, I don't want you to drop out. I want you to finish because you were so close, this is senior. And um, he is actually flourishing, he is actually almost done with his coursework. Um, I believe he is about three quarters of the way of his last class and he will be complete with his senior year. And then he will wait for May and walk with the rest of his group, so this. Option was beneficial to this particular student. Uh, my other student that I have online, um, circumstances just were just not in his favor. Um, his family had to leave the country, he did not want to lose his United States education, so um. With Dr. Graves' approval, we went ahead and put him online, he is continuing his education until he can return to the United States. If it turns out he does not return to the United States, then we will withdraw him like we would a normal student. Who was not in school, but so far his attendance has been on par.
It's a win-win for Dexter Schools, because they're still enrolled, we still get state funding, and we're also doing what's best for those individual students.
I mean, I'm I'm not, I I don't doubt that. I know, I mean, everybody learns differently, right, some people are great with online, some people just need that face-to-face interaction. So I totally get it, I'm I'm just having, you know, these different questions just because. I mean, again, we went from wanting to take a remote day off of the calendar, because kids don't learn, because teachers are not engaged. I understand that we're gonna have this one.
There are significant number of kids don't learn when you come.
That that there's gonna be this one teacher, is this teacher certified, is she qualified in all core areas to help these kids? I mean, just, you know, these different things that come up with with that, well, plus the fact that this application, I mean, this is the purview of the school board. This is school board, this is reorganizing of the school, this is establishing a new school, and it was all done without our knowledge.
Well, nothing's been done, that's why we're here presenting to.
Well, but it has, Dr. Graves, because there's an application.
But the application hasn't been approved.
And and so, I mean, we have, had I not asked for it, we wouldn't have seen it, or?
Well, she she wanted to be on the board agenda to present it to you, and I said, okay.
So is there five copies this or this one?
It's, that's just the one.
Yeah, there's a lot of questions behind all of this, you know, um. It doesn't all go back to. You know. And then I'll go back to sports, but. NMAA, the. Students, as they enroll, is that gonna, do we run the risk of bumping up in class or? No? Will they be able to participate in sports?
Yes, if they're a a a in district student, we would handle them accordingly, and they would be able to participate in all activities in sports. If they are out of district, like said, they come from Ortizia and they wanna uh, involve, and we would treat them. Um, the same way we would do with any other student, submit the form C to the NMAA and move before any.
We currently have students right now that are online, in another online school.
And so reading through this, I I mean, I'm seeing, okay, so. This is the district's proposal, again, it's what the letter says, however, we didn't know about it, so that's question number one.
Well, Kelly, actually you do know about it, cause that's why we're here.
Well, now we do, now we do.
The other thing that I think that may will make you feel a little easier in the board, online education's been around for twenty-five years. We should have been with it a long time ago, but we're trying to get to it now, and so we're coming to you, giving you the information.
Well, and I mean, truth be told, right, I mean, everybody pretty much knows that's, I mean, that's what I do for a living, is online school, so I, there's. No doubt in my mind that it can be done. But just from reading, reading this, and I mean, I haven't even gotten to completely read that. I mean, I, there are a lot of questions.
Yeah, my other question is, if, I mean, have we asked why the stu- these students are leaving, you know, cause. Talking to some parents, you know, they're leaving because they don't feel engaged in the in the high school, they don't feel like. Again, I am not trying to disrespect any of the teachers, okay, in any way, shape or form, I I. Thank you guys for everything you guys do, hats off, my respect to all of you guys, but I think there are some. We are leaving the door wide open, you know, accountability, are we going into some of these classes and. Auditing, making sure that they're utilizing their whole ninety minutes that they're in class, or however long it is, you know, I keep hearing about. Crossword puzzles all the time, or on their phones all the times, and I keep thinking, how many? How many times have you been checked up on, never, I don't know whose job that is per se, if it's superintendent's. Superintendent's or the principal's, I do not know, but.
That's my question, that would be, Lewis is number one, I know I'm in all the buildings and most of the classrooms on a daily basis. Also, our principals all are short walkthroughs, which would be five minutes or less, and then regular observations, so that's happening. I guess my question would be is, you know, when you get a phone call like that. I would love to be just forwarded to me so that I could number one, get you the answers that you're looking for, and say, you would feel more comfortable in answering the questions of whoever's got that concern. But if if we don't know about the concern and we can't give you, as Paul Harvey would say, both sides of the stories. I think that puts you at a disadvantage.
Well, one side of the story is how many students are not gonna graduate this year, and how many students are already left, that that alone is is a story in itself. You know, I, me, all I am is I'm trying to just speak for for the constituents, that's all, that's all I'm trying to do, I've got enough, you know.
So I haven't had any seniors this whole. All of them are in charge to graduate.
All of them, I thought we were.
No, we have some concerns regarding SAT scores. And but that doesn't mean that they're not graduating.
And they weren't told they're not gonna graduate.
Yeah, this is a whole other question, cause I thought some students went to. Online schooling because they could graduate there. I I mean, this is all new to me.
Plus we had a parent come saying that her child was told he would not graduate, and that's the last she heard. And so, and has she been recontacted, are we letting these parents know, or have any, I mean, is it just her that has spoken, I mean, I. There's a lot of questions.
Other communication.
A lot of questions.
Number one, I've had one parent. That has contacted me on that meeting, and I met with him, understood exactly what was said, and we're fine with it. If you have a contact or Lewis has a contact.
That's what I'm wondering, if more parents have.
Me know so that I can respond to it, because otherwise I can't.
Well, what I'm saying though is, in general, do all parents know, I, I'll be honest, that the. The parent that came that was the, that was, obviously she came in front of us, we know about that particular parent. My concern is, you've said over and over, there's forty-one kids or whatever, forty kids that did not pass their SAT. Have those parents been contacted, I don't know if they have. I mean, maybe they don't even know that their 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 kid got told that, cause their kid's terrified that. They aren't gonna graduate, like, the kids don't always relay the information to parents. We have different modalities, we have text messages, emails, we have Facebook, we have the app, we have, I mean. Letters, snail mail, why are we not reaching out, that's, that's a concern.
Well, I think the easiest thing is. As the administrators, is pick up the phone and call the parents. There's nothing wrong, I know that nowadays we like to text, we like to be on social media, but you know what, this this is. Our students, that's what we're here for, pick up the phone, call the parent, and say, this is what's going on with your student, I mean. It, it used to be done before, I know my parents got phone calls about my grades.
Well, and there's an all-call system, I mean, you can click which kids are getting what message, what parents are getting what message. You know, I mean, even the lunch meeting that was had. Click away and let those parents know you're getting, they're invited to a lunch meeting because there's some concerns. Like, there was no reason for kids to be bombarded, thinking they're coming to a lunch, whenever, the, all they've experienced about a lunch is. When you get to have lunch with the principal or superintendent, it's because it's a good reward. And then they get attacked with that, that's ugly.
Well, they weren't attacked, number one, they were informed that. Although they're making A's and B's in our class, which is one of the reasons I'm bringing the proposal for the um, grade inflation issue. Is that they didn't pass their exit exam.
But they were told, if you, if you, if graduation were tomorrow, you would not graduate.
No, they were not told that, in fact, Ms. Debbie told them, the state of New Mexico in the next two to three years. Will be clamping down on the graduation expectations. However, you have chances to take the ACT or the SAT again. As long as you're doing well in class, there's multiple options available for you to graduate right now. Every one of those students got a form that showed the ACT, the multiple times they can take it. I had one parent contact me, they came in, we explained the exact same thing, they were fine, and I guess what. As superintendent or even as administrators, what we would ask the board, if you get a phone call. No problem, we wanna keep you informed, pass it to us, we'll get you the information you need so that you can get the accurate information as opposed to. Whatever the word happens to be out on the street.
And again, no, no disrespect to anybody, but I think that that's where the communication. Um, and some of the issue arises is that, a lot of the parents feel comfortable calling maybe one of us. Um, they don't feel that other staff are approachable. So when we do, I know I do, tell them, you need to go to your administrator, you need to go to the superintendent, you need to go. They don't feel like there's an open door policy, they don't feel that administration is is, you know, has an open door. So that's where a lot of that comes in. Is not so much because we don't encourage them to come and talk to someone else, it's because they just, they feel like, you know what? If you're listening to us, but there's nothing you can do, then we're just gonna suck it up. Because we don't want our kids to suffer later over whatever the issue is.
And so we're talking about it, we just lay it all out. That's, that's the issue here. They don't feel like they can go into the school and talk to their administrators.
So what I'd like you to do as board members is when you get that phone call and they issue that response. That you let me know so that we can make it right with.
Well, and some of them have come, Doctor Graves, or I mean, to my knowledge, they have come, but they, they don't feel like it's, it's amounting to anything. And they just feel like the retaliation or the feeling of that has been. Either worse on them because they have been employees or because their children take their.
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're worried about the backlash behind it, you know.
And I, and I guess again, then what I would need to know is I, I'd want you to communicate that with me so they can communicate that with me because I haven't witnessed that. And so when somebody says that, I'd really like to talk to them so I can get the basics.
Well, and maybe they, maybe the intent isn't that, but whenever the name gets said. Then that's what occurs. And so maybe your intent isn't that, but that's what's occurring on the other side as far as they feel.
Yeah, and I think the big thing is, is let me know. Refer them to me, give me a chance to talk with them and then get you the answers that you'll feel more comfortable with the next phone call that might come because. If I don't know about it or our administrators don't know about it, we can't respond. Um I think what happens, and it's not just here in Dexter, it's anywhere, people have a tendency to go right to a board member. The, the, I don't wanna say the chain of command, but the proper protocol is if you have an issue with a teacher in the classroom. When someone calls me, I refer them back to the teacher. Because ninety-nine percent of the time, the teacher can solve that issue.
I think that's what Ms. Lopez is saying, that they have, they have followed the chain of command and then.
And I think I should know about it so I can respond to it and get you guys the answers you need and at the same time make the improvements I need to make.
You know, the, the thing is when you get one, two, maybe even three. But when you get four, five, six, seven, I mean, you, it, it just makes it that much more. Like, okay, what's really going on? Um again, you know, I couldn't do the job that. That these ladies and gentlemen do. I, I did it for little ones. That was enough for me. I did it for middle school and. High school somewhat with gear up. It wasn't to the extent that they do it. So my respects to everyone. I know it's hard to deal with hundreds and hundreds of parents. But that's what we signed up for, right? I mean, we signed up to do that. Um, you know.
I think what we're asking for is, give us the opportunity to respond to a particular issue. And I feel real confident with the staff that we have here that will respond to that issue and do it the right way.
Well, I, I think the response is fine, but I think it needs to, I think there's confidentiality issues as well. I think that that's a lot of it as well. And so, eh, right.
It's just hard to respond to it.
Well, no, no.
We don't know.
And not, not because they wanna remain anonymous, eh, but they don't, they don't need it blasted for everyone to see or whatever, like. Okay, let's just skip online school, so.
No, I, like I say, I appreciate your concerns, but if we don't, if we don't know about it or if I don't know about it, then I can't deal with it, you know?
Yeah, I get it. But if they're coming to us, that means they don't feel comfortable going to you guys. So by us saying, hey, go, go to them, that's what you gotta do.
Either that or they are.
More than likely, they're, it's like, it's like brushing them off. So, and that's, that's what I think they've gotten.
And I think, you know, and again, we'll have a board training this weekend and I'll. Typically, what happens is a lot of people, especially smaller towns, will go straight to the top. For example, if they have an issue with a teacher or principal, they may come to me first before they come to you. I would hope so, but sometimes they don't. But if they came to me, I would do like I would ask you to do is I always. Refer back to the teacher, say, Ms. Jones came in, they have a concern about this. Would you please schedule a time to meet with them? If you feel good about the meeting, let me know. If not, let me know too and let that parent know that if it's not resolved at that le- level. It goes from the teacher to the principal. It's not resolved at the principal level, principal to the superintendent or director. And then if it's still not resolved at my level, then obviously the board.
And that's how it should be. You're absolutely right. That's how, that's how, yes, and that's how it should be.
But it's not happening now, which is why you have to communicate this.
Can I ask our administrators, um have we made the attempt to contact these parents that we told their, or? Did the kids assume that they weren't gonna graduate? Have we contacted these parents?
I'd ask Ms. Otero to, and I will double check tomorrow to see that she's in the process.
Well, these parents know that their kids are graduating no matter.
Well, it's not no matter what, as long as they do what they're supposed to do.
Right. So do we, did they get options of how to solve their ish situation? And um are we following through with the kids, the students and the parents?
I will find out that Ms. Otero was supposed to be contacting each one of the seniors to make them. Be on a graduation track and if they're having issues to be proactive instead of reacting.
So she, the counselor doing that? Not the dean?
Could, well, I, I feel confident the dean does it too. I feel confident the principal does it too, if the student asks or the parent calls them. But I don't think they would just be calling kids out of the, you know, out of the. If they'll let us know if they have a concern, we'll be more than happy to show them multiple options.
But the, but the counselor's making the first move to call.
I would hope so and I'll find out.
And, and just as a quick side note, um the whole reason for the capstone class. Is because we knew our students weren't proficient yet for S A T in all components. Um some students are, uh but majority of our students, obviously we saw about fifty percent that were not. So this is why the capstone was put in place to supplement what they were doing as. So that they do show demonstration of competency in the core areas.
So the students who weren't, weren't at competency, they had to take the capstone, the students who were.
Every senior's in all the.
Right, the students who were, are already at competency still had to take it due to the other ones. Having, because, I mean, they just had.
They were involved into the capstone class before the S A T scores were final. But that is.
But they had their junior year ones, right?
As a district, that was decided that that is a required class that they have to take. It's not just an elective. It is a required class in order to graduate, whether they had passed the S A T or not. And that is in the H B one seventy-one.
No, yeah, yeah, it's one of the requirements. Or it can be.
And here's one of the other things that I, I feel real confident the board already knows this because it's just looking at the bigger picture of. Not just student apathy, but education in general in the country, not just in the state of New Mexico, but throughout the country. Students and parents have learned over the last couple generations, that school's not that tough. If you show up a little bit and you breathe air and you smile, there's a good chance you're gonna graduate no matter what. No child left behind was part of that issue. In other words, push the graduation rate, push the graduation rate. Everybody gets a diploma whether they're competent or not. So it's big issues that we're gonna have to tackle together as board and as administration. Which is one of the reasons I'm bringing that attendance issue to you and the grade inflation issue for lack of a better term. That's something we'll have to discuss at another board meeting and we can even have a work session on it, but. I understand your concerns, but at the same time, um it's something that we all have a big change, turn, turn, right?
So this proposed online high school, back, back to this, it, it's not an action item, is it, to move forward on it or not?
Just an information I need to respond.
I did wanna clarify with. If the kids are not on track to graduate. The S A T cases have shown that some way that they showed proficiency. That is state required. On track to graduate would be coursework because that's a different requirement altogether. They need. Twenty-four credits to graduate, they need four, you know, English units, four, now that's different. That's what I do as dean. And all the students, including especially the seniors, um they do have a coursework audit. That I maintain in a state by semester. They are, right now, seniors on track to graduate as per that. So. So be real careful when you say, well, they're not on track to graduate.
Well, I, I don't think we need to be careful that we didn't say that. We did not say that. So let's, let's not.
I think a big issue, again, it goes back to the um. The grade integrity. I think it really shocks parents when kids are on the honor roll or they're making A's and B's. They've been doing that for multiple years. And yet they can't pass a relatively, I don't wanna say simple, but below grade level exit exam. So that was the reason we had the discussion with the students. I think several things come into play when you talk to kids about taking a test. Some try and the ones that try and make an honest effort usually do pretty good. A significant number of our students do not try. Number one, because they're overtested. Number two, because they're have apathy. Number three. They know they can graduate without passing those exams. You've heard the Christmas tree effect. We just go in and bubble it up. That happens with a significant number. So it's definitely a challenge for all of us now.
Item seven A, unless there's any further discussion. Uh approval of January bills and payroll. I know that we approved the January bills and. Then we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor? Item seven B, presentation of budget adjustments and transfers. Have any questions on the. No questions for me? Okay, item eight A, anybody else? Sorry, I don't wanna just.
No, no.
Item eight A, new hires, none. Item eight B, resignation rates, none. Um we are moving into item nine, executive session. Um where we will be discussing the legal issues update and then uh limited personnel matters related to specifically superintendent job description goals and expectations. Um it is eight twenty-one. Do we have a motion to move into executive session? I make a motion that we move into executive session. We have a motion to move into executive session. Do we have a second?
All second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh roll call vote, Mr. Dovolo.
Hi.
Ms. Lopez, hi. Ms. Miles, uh, nice. We were moving into executive session at eight twenty-two P M. Thank you all.